Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the January sixteenth, 2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Call it to order. At six PM, we have a Board of Health variance. Also at six PM, we have discussion with Ray Levy regarding the retail sale of marijuana. In Freetown, under the consent agenda, we have approved and signed the deficit spending for snow and ice, renewed the annual 2018 license for Beach Fluff Road, discussed date for marijuana ballot question, discussed letter on Chase Road land as submitted by the Department of Conservation and Recreation, approved the new IRS rate for mileage, approved and signed schedule for the new 2018 Dodge Charger Cruiser lease, approved ambulance abatements for November 2017, sign a letter to Bristol County Advisory Board to allow David Demont to be the designee on behalf of Selectman Joe's in his absence for the Bristol County Advisory Board, sign the amended annual town election notice, approve the Board of Selectmen's minutes for December fourth, eighth, eighteen, and January eighth, twenty eighteen. Under Board of Health, discuss town trash recycling and pickup. And then under Personnel Board, we have change of statuses for John Pina, Taylor Podowsky, Timothy McIntosh, Lynette Giselle, James Gawnville, Zachary Papitas, Papitas? I don't know. Lauren Moreau accept letter of resignation and letter of resignation from Taylor Podowsky. Anyway, with nothing or just say, anybody here for public discussion?
I'm taking over meeting, so for the Board of Selectmen.
And we are also being taped for pre-cam?
Pre-cam.
All right. So we'll do the Board of Health variance because I think that, Ms. Levy, with all due respect, I think you're going to take a little bit longer than the health variance.
We will.
Thank you. Also turn it over to the Board of Health chair, Mr. Sullivan.
And I'll open the public hearing for nineteen Beach Fluff Road. For us, the two products coming forward for that.
Amel Duie, engineering. I was hired to do the designing and septic repair.
Do you have any green cards?
No, there's no effect of the borders.
Why don't you take your presentation and open up the discussion?
Sure. Yeah, we've got an existing three-bedroom dwelling on Beach Fluff Road, and we've got a dwelling garage and a pool here. Right now, they've got a existing septic tank that goes to the leaching pit down here. And they have a well on the property that's here, and it's a neighbor's property. It has one here, but it's a well over here. So it's their own well and the neighbor's well over here. Put these two blue raises here. So we've got a little window area to put it and meet the hundred-foot setback for the wells. So when we put the system over here, fifteen feet away, fifteen and a half feet away from the in-ground pool and the cold calls of twenty, so we're asking for four-and-a-half-foot variance to the pool. In addition, we're putting a new septic tank here as a proper offset to the profit line, and the old one that goes to be abandoned, the leaching pit will be abandoned. And then we have a second variance to the water table to make this all work. Gravity, we're going to be four-and-a-half feet from the bottom of the test, but we didn't actually get a water table there down ten-and-a-half feet, so we're asking for a six-inch variance, actually. It was all sand and gravel there, beautiful material. So that's the second variance. And the third variance is because we're trying to get it all to where gravity were slightly deeper than the three-foot of cover on the pool end of the leaching trench. So we've got forty-three-and-a-half inches of cover instead of thirty-six at the far end, which equals the pool. Those are the three variances.
Derek, is there any input that you'd like to make?
They had talked about doing a charcoal cover over the vent, which I like that idea. Other than that, I didn't have much to add, but I kind of like the cover idea on the vent, so.
Are making, are you making that part of the variance?
I would.
Okay.
I would make, add in the charcoal vent, and then I figured you were probably going to do a deed restriction on it. How many bedrooms is this?
It's a three-bedroom design, and we meet the, all the requirements for the size of the field. And we put the vent on the end of the system just so we get some oxygen and so forth in there.
It's a standard layout, crushed stone, double wash stone with sand over the top?
It's a double wash stone with pillow over the top.
Pillow over the top?
Yeah.
With weed barriers in between?
Yeah.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve with the variance requested for the leaching trench depth to the groundwater of four point five rather than five, the leaching trench setback to swimming pool fifteen point five rather than the twenty, and leaching trench max cover thirty-six, two point eight three to three point six three. Also with a deed restriction of three bedrooms.
Second.
And the charcoal, making sure that we have the charcoal covering.
It shows on the plan.
All right.
Second.
Motion being made in a second. Is there any?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night, thank you. Thank you. Okay, discussion with Mr. Ray Levy regarding the retail sale of marijuana in the town of Freetown.
Hi, good evening, everybody. There's not a lot of people here, but we were here at the last meeting, required me in any way to discuss the possibility of creating a retail facility for medical marijuana on our property. And we were asked to come back with a presentation that was in much more detail, so we have two perfect experts right here, to my left and to my right, Terry and Jacque. They have a presentation that they're going to make to answer questions and allay anybody's concerns. I'll just turn it over to them.
Thank you.
Another right place for you to see you, or you want?
Yep, no, I'm.
That's fine. Let's hope there's a technology almost, right? Should we shoot those lights?
No, that's fine.
They can detail the lights on?
Yeah. Perfect. Okay. Well, on the way home tonight, I'll tell you what, I'm going to call my parents and tell them for the first time the word "perfect" and "expert" was used with me. Never heard that before, and I have to say, I'm not perfect, and probably not an expert, but we'll go over the proposed RMD in Freetown. So the company is Liberty Compassion Center. So the timing of the project is imminent at this point. Our background, we're associated with, we're associated with expertise that is drawn from dispensaries in Maine, Rhode Island, and Connecticut. Liberty Compassion in Massachusetts is vertically integrated, meaning that we have a cultivation facility, and we have the ability to have a couple, and we intend for our cultivation facility to also be in Freetown. But essentially, we produce the products that will be sold through the dispensary. And the types of those products are flour, which is what you would typically think of way back when, and, you know, it's rolled in paper, or paper, and people inhale it and they smoke it. But also the other products which are rapidly gaining acceptance and favor is alternative dosage, not that which you smoke, but you could ingest. And you ingest it either in terms of edible products that you eat, things that you may drink, sublingual strips, transdermal patches, vape cartridges. I mean, we see, and we see that as gaining greater and greater acceptance with the, with the population that comes to these dispensers.
The community doesn't want to agree with us.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want me to talk about the timing?
Sure.
So maybe we should introduce ourselves. I think, you know, maybe I've been a bit too fast here. So Terry and I, we've been working together for seven years. I'm one of the founder, Wellness Connection of Maine, who's got four dispensaries in Maine, and also own a consulting company where we help other projects get off the ground. Terry and I, we worked on that project in Maine. We also worked in a project in Matta and Rhode Island for Summit Compassion Center. And so over the past six to seven years, we've been opening and helping groups open their dispensaries and their operation. And as you can see, I'm not a good person on computer. I don't know what's going on here.
It says the signal, so I don't know.
But no, the signal is here. I don't know why it's, yeah, but anyway. So here in this slide, we are introducing the company. So I don't know if you're familiar with the process, but before you can sell, you need to produce. And before you can produce, you can, you have to set up a cultivation center. And like Terry was starting to explain, you have to produce not only the plant, but also all the other products that come with the plant, which is more and more extract-based product. So at this point, you know, it's, the goal for the company is to have products, I would say, where you are from now, late 2018, most likely January 2019. Why it's, it's, it's not staying. Usually it stays. I don't know why it's staying, but it, so, yes, back. So I wanted, for long, but the slide was to introduce the type of clients that the dispensary usually get, and there's a misconception usually about who's coming to the dispensary. So we're talking here about medical cannabis. So patients that are coming to a dispensary have first visited a doctor, they have a recommendation, and they come to the dispensary with some specific conditions that they need, they want to resolve. So, you know, it's, it's all of, all of us, you know, who have the opportunities to go to a dispensary, and there's not really a stereotype. And the demographic is usually bolder than what people think. You know, the average, you probably didn't get a chance to look at it, but usually the average patient is forty-five to fifty-year-old, and it's men at sixty-five percent and women for the, for the other forty-five percent. The conditions that usually people come to this country is for, yeah, it's pain. So what's, you know, there's, as you know, there's a lot of conditions. Sorry about that.
So let me ask you guys something, because I don't want to, I don't want to be redundant and tell you what you don't know. Are there aspects of RMD that you're not familiar with, or would you like me to start from and give you from soup to nuts what the whole experience is, what this is about, or have you, or do you know enough about these dispensaries where you're like, you don't have to start from scratch, Cherry, but, because I could talk for three hours on this topic, or do you have certain areas that you would like me to address?
First of all, we don't have a dispensary here.
Right.
So this would be, you know, you're coming to us, asking us for, you know, a dispensary, and you don't have any, any in town at this moment.
Okay.
But I don't think we need to get into the, I mean, I'm speaking for myself. You're trying to sell us on allowing you to come in, so.
Correct.
You need to sell us on allowing you to come in.
Okay. So here's, you know, here it is. We started off six years ago and founded probably the first dispensary in all of New England, and the first license, and that was in Rhode Island. The doors that first opened were actually in Maine, because in Rhode Island, it was a moratorium for about a year. So Maine was the first one to go, and then in Rhode Island, that was the second one to go, and we draw our experience from those two. Massachusetts has the benefit of the regulations and law, which is very similar to Rhode Island and to Maine, meaning it's a nonprofit, medical conditions. For a patient to walk into a dispensary, they have to have what's called a qualifying debilitating medical condition, whether it is glaucoma to cancer. And you have to be vertically integrated, meaning that in Massachusetts, you can't be taking product in from so-called caregivers or other people. So they placed a good degree of emphasis on quality control, meaning that we have a cultivation, you have a cultivation facility, we expect it to be very sophisticated, to be operated at high standards, and there's supposed to be a threshold of quality that is achieved so that we know that these patients that are coming into the dispensary are receiving medicine that has been tested, standardized in terms of, in terms of the range of different cannabinoids, the level of THC in it. And also, the state was very careful, similar to Rhode Island and Massachusetts, to make sure that if you're walking through the door, you are a qualifying patient, you are registered in the Department of Health's database. So any person coming off of the street simply can't, cannot walk into a dispensary. They would have to come in, and then they would be, there's, there would be a secure area in which they, in which the receptionist verifies that they are a patient in Massachusetts, they haven't exceeded the amount of cannabis that they can purchase per month, which is two point five ounces every two weeks, or five ounces per month, and that they are registered and that they are a member with your RMD. At that point, they would come into the dispensary, and they would be greeted by a patient liaison. Now, a lot of these people who come in, this is the first time that they have been exposed to it. So we see a lot of patients that come in, and they're turning away from opiates, they're looking for maybe something that's like a last solution to allow them to get through chemotherapy or to ease pain. As Jacque had mentioned, the two most prevalent reasons that we hear for people that need this medicine is for pain relief and for sleep. Those are the two big, big drivers. And, and, and with that, I would say the population, at least in Rhode Island, it's about fifty-five percent over the age of fifty, forty-five percent lower than fifty in Maine, it's probably about fifty-fifty. But keep in mind that the fastest-growing segment of the population is fifty-five, sixty, and plus. And, and so we're seeing really first-time users coming on, and, but they're using this, they're, they, they want to use this as an alternative to prescription drugs. We see people come in, and they're taking it to combat alcoholism, and they say that that, that has helped. So in any event, the patient comes in, there's a liaison that meets them, we focus ourselves on education, that's one of our mission statements. Because a lot of people come in and they say, geez, you know, I have this ailment, I have that ailment, what type of strain or what type of form of medicine should I take to address the medical condition that we have? And thankfully, over the last six years, we've developed a wide, wide database of conditions that patients have come in, come in with, and how they have been treated, and what the success has been with respect to the type of medicine that they, that they use. A person that wants to be able to function during the day, they would be using a strain that's more sativa-based. There's another, the other strain of cannabis is, is called indica, and that causes you to be a little tired, a little, a little more slow. It's something that you would probably take in order to get a good night's rest and wake up the next morning feeling like you've gotten a good night's rest, but there's also a very strong anti-inflammatory component to that, which adds to the pain relief. You would get something that's more, that's more sativa-based, which we see a lot, if you want to be able to take the medicine, but not feel so sluggish during the day. And then there are people that just don't want that psychoactive effect, which means that we've got the ability through science now, and this is where this whole industry has evolved, we can create products out of very small amount of THC, and we can increase the amount of the other cannabinoids that exist in the plant. One that you may have heard about is CBD, and CBD really came onto the scene about four or five years ago, when in Colorado, you saw a lot of families migrating to Colorado because they had children that were suffering from seizures, and they found out that a product that had a high CBD to THC ratio was able to successfully address people that have seizures. And, and we've had that experience, too. So we actually have children that have come into our facility that, whether it's autism or whether it's intractable epileptic seizure, seizures that they have, it's been, been able to successfully address that, and we actually received an award from the, one of the major hospitals in Rhode Island over dealing with a very young patient that had that condition. So patient education is very important to us. People come in, we sit down, we go through the process with them, and sometimes it's trial, a little bit trial and error. You see them again until they finally are taking a certain type of medicine and a certain type of strain and a certain type of dosage that is allowing them to achieve what they want to achieve from a health standpoint and be able, and have them be able to get through what they get through. Now, also on the education front, we use our dispensaries, and I would imagine that we use Freetown, too, in this manner, in order to be able to put on seminars and community meetings for people with different health conditions, or they just want to learn a little bit more. For example, for a three-month period in Rhode Island, once a week, every week, we hosted a veterans group. And the veterans group came in, and it was, and it was closely timed to Rhode Island adding PTSD to the medical condition, and it was incredible, the receptiveness that we had in so many veterans that came in. And they would be able to come in, spend time together, and then they would share their experiences with one another, and it became a support group, and it also became educational in terms of how the medicine could help them. We also had a all-female group that was breast cancer-oriented, and that lasted for about four months, when we've had doctors and other medical professionals come in, but sometimes the patients educate themselves as well. We've also conducted cooking seminars, because some people take the product and they would like to know, geez, how could I help prepare this in my own food, whether it's, whether it's simple in terms of adding it to tea, or, you know, making cookies, brownies, or things like that. So we, we've given cooking lessons as well. You know, Jacque, myself, and our organizations, we've spoken at a lot of seminars throughout the country, some in Boston, out in Las Vegas as well. And, and I really enjoy talking more about the medicinal and the health aspects of it. Certainly, there's a business side to it, too. These are very expensive, it's very expensive to run, there are a lot of accounting issues. But, but from a patient's standpoint, this has probably been one of the most rewarding projects that I've been involved in. I'm an attorney, business-oriented, and firsthand, you know, my, my initial stereotype of the type of patient that was coming in was probably like twenty, thirty years ago, when you kind of think of Woodstock, or you think of California. And what Jacque had mentioned is, is true, there is no stereotype that you can put on the patients, it's from all walks of life. I think two months ago, I told you, it was, because I'm, I'm in the dispensary all the time, I've seen priests come in with their mothers, I've seen judges come in with their spouses, I've seen chiefs of police come in with relatives, and if this can help the patient, and it's proven it has, get through a full range of chemotherapy, be able to keep certain weight on, be able to go to sleep, be able to address these ailments, instead of taking OxyContin, Vicodin, Prandazone, and the list goes on and on, then, and I saw more and more people coming on, and I said to myself, you know, this isn't a bubble or a fad that's going to burst, this is truly a medicinal avenue that people are taking. And I firmly believe that this might be a piece to the puzzle of also addressing the, hopefully, an epidemic that exists in most of the New England states. So that's a little bit the edu, from the education standpoint. From a security standpoint, you're not going to find a more secured facility than these RMDs. Typically, we contract with two alarm companies, one in-state, one out-of-state. We work very closely with local law enforcement. By the time anybody was, was to try to get, would try to get into this facility and access either money or product, it would take them about thirty minutes. The alarm, the alarm would immediately notify local law enforcement, it's being monitored off-site, too. And I'm pleased to say that in six years, with, when you combine Maine, Connecticut, and Rhode Island, and you're talking about close to fifteen to twenty thousand patients, probably at this point, over a million transactions, there has not been one police incident where police have been called or broken in. And I mention that because I, you know, probably the worst business mistake of my life was getting involved in a convenience store where people come in and gas, and it was like every other week, there was, there was an incident where somebody was trying to come in and rob money, you know, to rob the place, and it was a very difficult business to run. This has been the complete opposite. People come in, generally, my experience has been the patients come in, very quiet, not too, and people come in and they just want to get their medicine, and they, they want to leave. We have security offices in the parking lot. Maine and Rhode Island has policies, you do not ingest or take this medicine inside. You also don't go outside and do it either. They walk out with bags, you can't see it. People enter, people get into their car, and they wind up leaving, and it's very, very quiet traffic. It's, it's continuous, but it's very, very quiet. People come in, and they just, and they, and they get their medicine, and they're just, and they just go on their way, unless they want to stay and have more of like an educational situation, one-on-one. So the security is, is very, very tight. From a quality control standpoint, we've kind of held ourselves to a high standard as well. I always, I said to myself, as soon as the alternative dosage forms started coming online, and I saw what was going on in Colorado, California, I mean, people are ingesting this, they're taking, they're taking it in. So the first question you say is, geez, what, what are they putting into their body? You know, so I said, you know, what we have to do is, if we're, if we are, and we have an obligation to provide these alternative dosage forms, I want it to be in a clean-room environment, and we, both our facility in Maine and in Rhode Island is ISO-7 certified, so it's a clean-room environment. Our quality con- Our quality control testing is consist, is, is continuous. We use gas chromatography and HPLC machines to test the flower and the products in terms of its cannabinoid contents and potency. And it's labeled on all of our products. We examine nothing, no flower goes out that has any type of mold or, any type of mold or defect like that. We have a research and development where if we see a plant that is even diseased, and Maine has it, it's quarantined, and we study that to figure out from a cultivation standpoint, how did that come about? And how can we address that? So the products that go out the door are similar to CVS. It's labeled everything down to the amount of sugars, fats, to the cannabinoid content. And from an inventory control standpoint, we track everything from seed to sale, meaning that if somebody returns a product and says, yeah, there's something wrong with this, or I just don't like it, and we can actually trace it right back to the seed and exactly the flower, the plant that it came from to analyze if there was an issue from a cultivation standpoint. So when we talk about a cultivation facility, it's really a large commercial manufacturing facility that now employs a lot of people in Maine. It's probably close to 80 people in Rhode Island. We have about 45 people. Our cultivators, you would think that these are people that are highly skilled and they've always been highly skilled in cannabis. And I think at the beginning, it started off like that. But right now, you have very sophisticated people from the agricultural industry that bring in their skills from growing tomatoes and lettuce right in here. So all the people that we hire, for example, in Rhode Island, they'll come out of the University of Rhode Island Department of Agricultural School. And they come, we train them. Everything is going to more automation. It's so, we don't have to worry about human error in terms of adding certain nutrients by hand and watering. Most of our facilities have automated irrigation drip systems. The nutrients are pre-mixed, they're all pumped in. Taking you to go ahead, Jacques.
It's the same thing at the dispensary. I just wanted to, you know, just in Freetown, it'd be a dispensary. Same thing for the staff. The staff is trained by the company to answer all the questions that Terry was mentioning from the patients. So they can always bring a good experience to the patients coming in the door.
Yeah. And we learn from the patients. So, I mean, this year's going to be, this year's going to be a big year for us in terms of automation, from filling products to home delivery is going to be big. If you see the patients that come in, there's a good amount of them that really struggle to get in. You know, they're coming in with canes, they're coming in with wheelchairs. And Massachusetts wants you to have a home delivery system. I believe that it should exist, and it's just kind of working on the right software to get paid in advance and to make sure from a security standpoint, it works. So that's something that will be, that will be moving in. And then, and like I said, this, this continues to, I always thought that we would hit a glass ceiling in terms of the number of patients, but I just don't see a glass ceiling in this industry. With more and more people coming on, the type of facilities that you need are large. It's no longer like small little warehouses to grow. You're talking about what we have, what we're excited about in Freetown, which is, which are greenhouses and large cultivation that you would typically see only, you know, with traditional agriculture, whether it's corn, tomatoes, lettuce, or whatnot. It creates good employment opportunities.
So that's the map of Liberty Compassion?
Yep.
So out of Tintin, which is where the current facility is going to be? The plan is to have three dispensaries, one in Westfield and two in this region. And that would allow, like Terry was mentioning, easier delivery to patients when that becomes available. Want to talk about the site? So you know where the site is, right? So that would be, so the road is right there. That would be the parking lot, and that would be the facility. There is kind of a floor plan of the facility here. So it's a little bit small, but so here, you get a small consulting room. So when a patient comes in, they have a private place where they can actually meet with one of the staff and discuss their reason why they're there and get some education. So we get the security entrance here. So Terry was mentioning the security. This is actually where we call a man trap. When a patient come in, they don't come, they do not come straight in the dispensary room. They are first in the room that is secure. That's where they are checked in, all the credentials verified. And when the staff estimate that it's time for them to get in the dispensary room, they move in. So like I was saying earlier, get the small consulting room, get a lounge area, and then you get cameras where, so that would be the cameras here where, you know, people can buy their product and stuff. From, from the outside, you see there's going to be some renovation done to the building. And so that's the existing building right there. So only, it's going to be added. The parking is where I am. So a patient will come in. The man trap that I just mentioned is right there, and that's where they check in. There'll be, obviously be cameras outside. So if the staff feel like, you know, somebody is a threat to the, to the building, they have a way to, you know, pull the, pull the lever. But usually, like Terry was mentioning, we never had any issue in any of our facilities. Most of the time, it's more a parking issue where people trying to take somebody else's parking space, but more, not much more than that.
And just to let you know, we typically have a security officer inside and outside from the parking lot. And in the jurisdictions that we've been in, we prefer those security officers. Typically, there's a hiring preference for the local town. And, you know, for example, we have a hiring preference for local law enforcement with the local police department in Rhode Island. Here, I'd imagine it would be the same type of preference as well. But it's just to make sure that things are orderly outside and inside. But knock on wood, sometimes I say to myself, geez, is it necessary to continue with this level of security? But I guess better safe than sorry.
So the hours of operation at this point are estimated Monday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Probably going to start a little bit slower, but that's the goal. No Sunday initially until it's necessary. So probably late 2019 or around that time, you know, we'll have Sundays. How many employees at the dispensary? Well, up to 10, maybe a little bit more because, you know, we're covering a lot of hours. You always have, you know, four to five people at the same time, you know, as far as the staff. So if you count, you know, six to seven days a week, you know, create 10 jobs at that point. Then, you know, Terry mentioned earlier the security. So it's going to be a monitoring system with CCTV, with cameras outside and motion detectors, window breaking system. Then I just mentioned the secure vestibule. And always in relationship with the local law enforcement. Something that I didn't put here, but we have systems to make sure that, you know, there's an issue. We can actually stop a problem. So we actually have a fake pile of money with a capter inside. So we never had to use it in five, six years. But if that was to happen, you know, those trackers, right, will actually go with whoever stole it. And then usually within half hour, they are arrested. But again, knock on wood, never to try it. So we have a small video to show you, if you're interested, that shows you how the plant is grown and then how the interaction with patients happen in the dispensary. It's roughly six, seven minutes. Happy to show it to you or answer any questions. You can answer any questions at the lab. The video. Need to put some sound.
Yep. I'm going to move that.
Okay, back.
I know.
Powering on. Welcome to Altech Lansing.
Oh, wait, that's there too. Of course, eh? I think they were holding the wave this way.
Yep. Put it on the way. There you go.
Worked for what, 10 minutes, right? We're lucky. I think Mr. Levy on the tech savvy. You gotta go. All right, so. Here.
What is medicinal marijuana?
It's the greatest thing on earth that people don't want to talk about.
This is a medicine.
A natural alternative.
It's been grown for thousands of years.
Medicine has so unique to society.
It's made a tremendous change in my life.
Cannabis is the main ingredient that makes everything else possible. Gives me ambition.
Medical cannabis is helping people.
The Wellness Connection of Maine is.
A family.
We operate four dispensaries located in Portland, Howell, Thomasin, and Brewer, offering the best medicine possible to our members.
We pride ourselves first on our compassionate care.
A safe place full of compassionate people that are educated and capable of walking them through this journey.
Our members are a snapshot of the society that they live in.
And they come in to see us and they see how clean it is and how professional it is, how bright and open and inviting it is. It's a welcoming environment. We want people to come in here and feel comfortable.
They will make you feel right at home and at ease.
The Wellness Connection is a sanctuary.
They answer every question I've ever had.
The educational piece is, is one of the biggest things that we do here. And it's one of the services we can offer that our members can't get elsewhere.
You can know that as a member, you're going to come in, somebody's going to meet you where you are. And they're going to help you determine the strain that's going to work best. They're going to help you choose a delivery method that works for your, your needs and your lifestyle. And when you come back, they're going to ask, how did that work for you? How did that go?
People look upon the medicine as a very personal relationship that they have.
To be able to supply life-changing medicine for somebody, to give them quality of life back is definitely a good feeling.
You hear all these stories of all these people that are benefiting from what you're doing, and it's a good feeling.
Under Maine law, dispensaries are vertically integrated. And that means that we produce 100% of all of the whole plant medicine that we provide to patients. And it also means that we produce 100% of any edibles or tinctures or topicals that we provide.
You never forget the first time you walk in this building.
In order to deliver a very high-quality plant product, not only do you have to manage the cultivation of that plant very effectively, but you also manage all the post-harvest processing and then, you know, the careful quality control and the packaging. Each step of that process has to be handled with care.
Everybody's going to do their part. We've got a 20,000 square foot building with a couple thousand plants that, you know, really depend on each other to get quality medicine out.
It's very clean in here, it's very professionally done. Everything is kept track of very closely.
We look at security of the plants, which means any kind of introduction of pest or disease, we control that, the clothes that we wear, the shoes that we wear, how we sanitize our equipment. And then there's the security of maintaining control over our controlled substance.
Hi.
Hi. How you doing today?
Good. How are you?
You all right?
Were you here to see?
I am here to see you.
Okay.
We provide access to work areas on a housing basis. Depending on what level of employee there is, they have access to where they have their work. This is our propagation room. This is where we start our clones. Our clones come from our larger vegetative plants. And when it's time to start a new crop cycle, we go in and we take cuttings from the strains that we want to grow in that cycle. And we root them in here. In this room, we have all the plants that are in the vegetative growth stage. We have different kinds of lighting systems in this room. You can hear the fans. We have ventilation, which is critical for the gas exchange of the plants. We have temperature and humidity control in here. And of course, we hand water everything to make sure that the moisture is managed correctly. And this is where we assign the plant tag number that stays with it until it goes all the way to the packaging station, which is four months from now. This facility has our four flower rooms. And in those rooms, we have the same kind of attention to detail of growing condition. The plants stay in for eight weeks total, but they go through different protocols for growing, for pruning and crop care and fertilization. This room has about 240 plants. You're looking at the final stages of cultivation here. You can see, you know, you've got some yellow leaves, but you're, you're at the end of the growth cycle of these plants. This room will be harvested today.
This is our dry room. It's temperature-controlled and humidity-controlled. As soon as we harvest, everything comes in here, we hang it. This way, we're able to seal the room off and we control the temperature and, like I said, the humidity. So we can bring the plants down to what we need them to be so we can rough-trough them.
We are in the packaging area. This is the way the plants come into this room. This here is the identification tag that you saw earlier attached to the plant.
We have to separate everything that we trim, our fine trim. And sometimes our small flower goes into our edibles and our larger bud gets packaged and put into the dispensaries.
We have various specifications that we follow when we package our things so that we give our patients not only a very high-quality product, but accurate weights and appearance.
Every now and then, you do step back and say, wow, I'm really, you know, doing this. I'm part of something bigger than what's going on in this building right here.
When I see the product go out the door, what I reflect on is the quality of the team that we have that does all that work.
One thing that everyone does have in common is that they're very compassionate and they care about the mission of the company.
It's really amazing to be a part of this, this whole movement.
I've never in my life worked in a place that I'm excited to come to work. It's been a really rewarding experience to be a part of the process.
Or have an opportunity to make a difference in people's lives, or I can do something to tangibly help people every day. It's really what I want to do.
You see a lot of really sick people come through the doors and you see a lot of people leave really happy.
That's why we're here. That's why we do what we do.
Being here every day is, is just the right thing. Like, I belong here and I feel that. I really believe in that.
So proud, so happy, fulfilling a feeling when you get up in the morning and why you are doing what you're doing and why we're fighting the fight.
We here again and again, thank you for giving me my life back or, you know, putting my life back on track. And that's, that's the core of who we are.
That video is good, not just in terms of education, but that's a real typical, it's really representative in terms of the cross-section of the workers and the patients that you saw come in. If anybody had like preconceived notions as to, you know, who these patients are, what do they look like, same thing with the workers. That's really representative. So in any event, that's, that's been our experience, that video. And for me, it's, like I said, it's been a very rewarding experience. And it's been, it's been rewarding for the patients and the people in our community to be able to have access to it. And that's the type of facility and professionalism that we would love to be able to establish. at a Freetown site on South Main Street. And, you know, it'd be an honor to operate a medical RMD in Freetown in its manner.
Thank you. Do you want to put the lights so we can see? All right, I'll open it up to the board for questions.
So I have a couple of questions and one of my concerns before, which really wasn't addressed tonight, is the site itself. Where on the site this is going to be? The size of the building? You're going to use the current building that's there. What's the proximity to residential units in your PMUD project that you're proposing relatively soon? Am I here, there's going to be a...
Well, it's possible, yes. Probably, I should say. Probably. I got an email today from the meeting that we scheduled to have on February 20th is going to be canceled. Somebody can't make it, we know so. So it's going to be probably in March. The building is 5,000 feet. That's the size of the building. That's the... There's no expansion plan. It's in dirt, all interior. Proximity to any residential... All we have are conceptual plans at the moment and any residential setbacks that are required, you know, should this go forward, we just make sure to bring it near there. That can be dealt with. There's no residential there at all.
No, I understand that. But I know you were looking at doing mixed-use development. That's what PMUD stands for, mixed-use development, which has a component, 60% of the component is commercial, 40% residential. It's required. The density levels are pretty high. You're going to have a lot of tight density right in that area. So that's one of the concerns I had that's really not addressed in that excellent presentation, by the way. It's just, that's one issue I had. In the slide, you had Clinton as your main facility with branches coming out. Is that going to be your main grow facility? Is it going to be in Clinton?
Right.
Okay. In the grow facility that you had cited here in Freetown, what's the...
So the grow facility in Freetown was, when we submitted it, was one of the things we wanted to talk to you guys about tonight. There was a condition which actually said that there needed to be a host community agreement, which we attached to it, but DPH wouldn't accept it because it said there was a condition in the letter. So we actually need an additional or a new letter from you guys at least supporting the cultivation facility that you already did. Even though we attached the letter, they asked for it to be a clean, if you will, letter of support.
They won't take a conditional approval.
Even though the condition has been met and submitted to them. So that's one thing we want to do. But the Clinton facility is a relatively small-scale facility compared to what we're doing and what we want to do in Freetown, which would be over 100,000 square feet of greenhouse. So from a timing perspective, to get the plant open, the first step would be to go open and operate in Clinton and the next step would be to open and develop the greenhouse here in Freetown as well. And it could be much larger than 100,000 feet.
Yeah, you put in for $5,000 if I remember this. Up to.
And obviously, that would take time to scale as you, you know...
In the RMD, you're looking for that before the grow facility? You're looking for the RMD first in Freetown and then...
Yeah, I mean, right now, what we need to do in order to kind of ramp up the business is to get a third location for the dispensary. And that was why we, you know, we felt that this was attractive. The building works for it. We've had that site for a long time and have had, you know, some struggles getting it to the point where we can attract tenants and, you know, could take a few more years to get to that point. And this is kind of sitting at our doorstep. And we also think that due to kind of the regulations that have happened and how the recreational market may get delayed, that it'll be sometime potentially before any recreational happens anywhere in Massachusetts. It's going to take a lot more time than the medical. So, you know, this is an opportunity for us and an opportunity for Freetown with the host community agreement to, you know, get some additional revenue. We did submit, one of the things that you guys had asked for was a host community agreement draft that we submitted to you guys after our last meeting, which, going off of my memory, was 3% of the annual sales from that specific location, which is, you know, could be some significant dollars. We projected a location like this would be somewhere between $5 and $10 million in annual sales. So, you know, $300,000 on my end.
From my recall, oh, not done yet. I got a couple more. Actually, we'll leave that for the moment. Medical facility, it's similar to the Colorado Bay system where everything's grown, SKUs are taken as it's grown. All the clippings get disposed of from each plant. Everything gets disposed of and the plant individually gets tracked throughout this chain sale. Is that what I was getting from the...
Yeah, so, yeah. We track everything from seed to sale and really, without processing. And processing is extracting the oil from the plant leaves. There's really not too much waste at all. So any trimmings, except for maybe the stalk, but any trimmings or particles or things that fall, that's all put into very powerful extraction vessels that extract the oil out. So at the end of the day, the operation number one, there really won't be any waste at all.
Background checks. Staff gets background checks also?
Yes, that's one of the mandatory requirements of the state. They're pretty strict in terms of undergoing core background checks with respect to their principal officers, board of directors, and all of the employees. And in order for you to be a registered agent or principal in the facility, you have to pass the state's background check. So nobody's in this facility without undergoing a background check.
You were describing some of the health benefits from the different strains and stuff. How much is that as science and how much is that as more anecdotal evidence?
You know, it's tough to put your finger on that. Anecdotal evidence, over the last five years, you know, you see it. But there's also a lot of literature out there right now and a lot of literature has been authored by MDs and scientists and obviously, it hasn't been sanctioned by the federal government or the FDA just because you can't. But it's pretty... I would say it's maybe half and half at this point. You know, I'll give you an example. Rick Simpson Oil, you know, it's... Has been shown to combat the growth of cancer. And it's a very, very, very thick oil that comes out of the plant and it's not really refined and people take it. And it's very difficult, but it's a very high-level THC and it has all the cannabinoids and more that the plant has to give. And there's been numerous articles about its effectiveness in terms of dealing with the aggressiveness of cancer. And it's been authored by a number of MDs out there. So there's a lot of literature, but also, we see it with patients that are not taking OxyContin, but are taking this instead, or not taking Marinol, but taking this instead and they're getting as good or better or better results without the serious side consequences of addiction.
One of the issue is that there was no funding and a lot of doctors could not even have access to the cannabis to do the research. Been changing in the past two or three years because most states are allowing it. Some hospitals or doctors are allowing it. But funding was a big problem. So there's a couple of nonprofit organizations that are raising money for the research. So we actually partnered with one of them and they've done a study last year using dispensary patients to, you know, be able to get their studies out. So I would agree with Terry. It's 50/50 and it's changing very, very quickly.
Oh, I'm just jumping right here. But I would say that those studies are studies done on a small amount of people. We're not talking about a large study. And I do know that the hospitals are not accepting those patients to be able to use whatever medical marijuana they have on hand. They cannot use while they're in the hospital.
Yes, correct.
The federal government is still classified as a...
Yes.
Class one.
But some hospitals, some doctors in hospitals have been participating in studies like this because they're realizing that, you know, it's becoming more and more of a health policy.
And we have to, we have to, we have to... All these patients have to have physician recommendations. So when we start seeing patients now coming in from Dana Father, which is probably one of the top three cancer institutions in the United States, that's when you say, "Well, okay, you know, something here." And so we're seeing those patients from the various oncology departments saying, "Yeah, I think this could help you," you know? And so we're getting, we're seeing more and more of those patients, which is very interesting.
The other question too is, does it? For the same reason, there is no study, like for example, you go to the doctor and they're going to say, "Take two of these and you'll get better tomorrow." In this case, there's not enough studies to say, you know, "Take two drops of this, two drops of that." So that's where our staff is, you know, is in training to answer those questions. And it's getting easier and easier to get the answers because research is happening now all around us.
That leads me to another question that I had, which, are you going to have any medical facilities on site? Do you have any doctors on site? Are you going to employ doctors in your facility?
Those are my questions.
I cheated. Well, that is a problem. Not a problem, but something they do in California where you walk in one door, you get to see a doctor, he gives you a prescription, you walk in the next door and you walk out with this product.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, you know, Maine doesn't do that. Rhode Island doesn't do that. Rhode Island actually frowned upon us employing doctors, you know, having doctors in the facility. Number one, it kind of raises a little bit of a conflict of interest, number one. Number two, the patients who are coming in, they have their own personal physicians and the doctors have already given the recommendation and they're coming in to be approached by another doctor. So to me, that kind of screams out as a conflict, number one. Number two, once you're in the business of employing a doctor, having a doctor in there, are you coming under a new set of guidelines? Are you now more of a hospital or a medical facility? This was kind of carved out of the laws as an RMD and I think once you start going in that other direction, it just opens up like a can of worms. So I do not envision Freetown hiring doctors, employing doctors or having physicians within the facility.
We don't even refer doctors. You know, people who call, come stop by. We don't even give them doctors. You know, it's up to them to, you know, find, you know, whatever they need to do.
So that's a no, you have to have doctors on site or employ. Thank you.
Charlie?
My view here is, there is the fact that this is medical marijuana. It's more the, you know, chemicals derived from the plant than the actual plant. I think that's what we have to kind of remember. And I have, my own opinion is, I don't have a problem with the concept. The logistics, you know, we'll have to work those out. But my opinion is, I don't have a problem with the concept. What I've seen, what I've heard of, yes, there's a problem because it was considered illegal. It still is federally. Research hasn't been able to be as prevalent as probably should be discussion. So I don't have a problem with the concept at all.
Hi, guys. So can we talk a little bit about the trucks coming in from Clinton and how those are secured?
Sure. So prior to a delivery being made to Freetown, there would be an accounting or an inventory step to make sure that whatever products are there are reconciled in our inventory control software. All deliveries are made with two security personnel in a truck. One is always in the car. For example, if there was a breakdown or somebody had to leave the facility, there's, you can be assured that one person would always be in the facility, excuse me, in the car where the products are while the other person has to maybe attend things outside of the routes and time of deliveries are always random schedules, random timing. Sometimes they're coordinated with local law enforcement, but that may be overkill. And when, and the people on the receiving end, the dispensary, obviously know the time in which the vehicle will be approaching. They will go outside prior to the vehicle coming just to make sure that the area is secure and safe. And then it would be delivered and security from the dispensary would meet the delivery and the product would be accounted for and would go in the back door to the facility.
So the truck we're talking about is like a small minivan, much bigger than a small SUV because it's not supposed to have a lot of inventory in the dispensary, right, the production facility is where the inventory is. So our system can tell us, you know, "We're low on Tuesday, so let's do a delivery."
That was my next question. How is your inventory controlled?
Yeah, so, you know, same for production. You know, we produce what is going to be needed, really four months down the road because it takes four months. But then for the delivery, it's the same thing, you know, just like any store. Yeah, you know, we don't want to have too much inventory in your store. You're just trying to keep it for, you know, a couple of days.
My next question is transactions, as far as monetary transactions. How are we handling those?
So that's one of the conundrum of the industry. It's mostly cash. There are now alternative payment solutions, mostly apps, a little bit like PayPal and they've been around for a couple of years and it's working out okay. In Maine, we probably have at this point 30% of sales that are actually non-cash. That said, every transaction, like the video was showing you, is accounted for, the product itself, but also the limits for the patients and what they're paying. So at the end of the day, you know, everything is counted, put in safe and the accounting department knows exactly how much you're supposed to make into the bank.
All right, and so Charlie is not sleeping well at night, so I'm going to use you as an excuse. Wants to have, wants to sit down and speak to somebody. That's okay.
Yeah.
Right? And then you guide him towards...
So a first-time patient will come in, check out the recommendation, the license, you know, make sure that they can come in, they register. There's always an intake session in one of those small rooms that I was showing you. So not only they get education about the product, but education about the dispensary. We have them sign a good neighborhood agreement and explain the rules about not smoking in the parking lot and things like this. But in this case, they will go in the room, they explain, you know, why they're here and kind of get some education. And at that point, you know, the staff would, you know, tell them, you know, what they...
Yeah. Were you more comfortable?
Do they need a card first, a state card?
Yeah, that's what I meant. You know, they won't get the answer until they check then. You know, you need the card, you need the recommendation. But at that point, when you're a registered patient, then you have access to the staff anytime you come in and kind of ask more questions.
How good, how long are the cards with for? And is there ever a follow-up for the cards?
It's usually a, well, in Rhode Island, I'm not sure what it is in Massachusetts, but it's a year or two years and then you would have to renew it with the state.
So our system tracks those dates. So if somebody comes in and the card is expired, so first they have to show the card each time they come in. But they say the card expired, the system says expired, then they won't be able to come in, ask them to renew their card. Or if they get to the point of transaction and they're above their limit, they came the day before, then the system is not going to... It's not even going to allow the transaction. It's not even the staff who's going to tell them, "You can't." The system won't allow the transaction.
When you say renewal, is that just paperwork renewal or do they have to come reexamine it by a doctor again, make sure it's still a needed description?
Well, usually they have to go to the doctor because it's a recommendation, right? So they came to the doctors, you know, for a condition. So at that point, they have to go back to the doctor and re... I want to say reprove because it feels...
Reevaluate.
So a condition of renewing the card is a reevaluation by the doctors to make sure it's still medically necessary for the... it's still medically necessary for them to have that.
Correct, correct.
No, that's fine. No, 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 that was fine. Okay.
And then, you know, the staff is also trained, you know, you look at this and it's done a lot of good for a lot of people, but, but let's be honest, it's like anything else too. There's a certain segment that you, and, and as a compassion center, you've got to be careful about. The staff is also trained to kind of look for areas that could be concerns, you know, and, and there is maybe a two percent, uh, portion of the population that could be showing signs of addiction or, or abuse or, um, or there could be red flags if you see somebody that is purchasing five ounces a month, you know, that they really need. Because I would say typically, we have so much data, maybe one to one point five ounces per month, you see patients purchasing. So if you see five ounces, is that diversion? So, you know, the staff is trained just to have their antenna up to see, um, you know, to, to look at patients. Because you want to help people out too. So if you see people that maybe, maybe abusing the product with a very small, small amount, you want to be in a position to maybe sit down, maybe talk to the person or, or see if you can assist in that situation.
But you can't deny them, right? And you can't pull the card from them?
No, you can't deny them, but if you do suspect diversion or if you suspect abuse, then, um, then you can make a phone call either to their doctor or maybe to the Department of Health.
Just to say on, on, um, it depends obviously on the, on the laws, but, uh, I know that in Maine, we actually denied entrance. Uh, somebody actually tried to register twice, you know, on the, uh, kind of slightly different name. When we called that person, we said, sorry, we don't want to, you know, this is not what we do here. You signed a contract initially that asked you not to do this. So we, you know, we asked that person not to come back.
Yeah, I want to clarify my statement. Um, yeah, if we do suspect that there's abuse or diversion, then yes, we can deny the sale of a product. Um, and then from a policy standpoint, we follow up very, very quickly with the disposition of the Department of Health.
Is there anything in interstate that shows when a person uses their card? In other words, if I go and get my five ounces from you today, is there anything stopping me from tomorrow driving to one of your other facilities or another company's facility getting my five ounces from them?
In Massachusetts, uh, in Massachusetts, you can't do that because everything is, is locked into an interoperable database. So they would be able to, every dispensary would be logged into the, to the, the main software program in Massachusetts to see exactly what your limit is. I, so what I think you're saying though, however, there are states that have reciprocity, meaning that you have a Massachusetts resident that is purchasing from Massachusetts dispensaries, but he may be going to Maine that has a reciprocity program and, and basically says, as long as you have a qualifying medical condition that Maine recognizes and you have a recommendation from a physician, you can purchase at a dispense, you can purchase at a dispensary. And so the question is whether that person has exceeded that five ounce limit in Massachusetts that went over to Maine and purchased like another ounce or two ounces. And I don't think there is, I don't think the state databases are, are aligned to deal with that scenario.
But there is a state database that when you use your card at one facility, it knows if you use it at another facility, even though it's not the same company.
Yes.
Okay. Um, yeah, if you, if you cross federal lines with it, I mean, state lines, I think it's still a federal offense.
It is.
I think that would be a bad thing to do.
Right.
But people do things. Um, the other thing, you're not planning to have a, for lack of a better term, a pen to drive the vehicle into when you have deliveries? Most police stations now, they either have Sally Court, which that's not necessarily practical, or they have a pen in area where a van drives there, it's high fence secured.
Yes.
Unload, then they drive up the other side.
That was the intention. It was tough to see on that plan because it was black and white and it wasn't that clear. But yeah, that, in the back of the building, there's currently a fenced in area and we would expand that for where the, where the truck would actually back in.
Okay.
And make the building.
So it's not pulling up to the front door, people aren't coming up and wheeling it in?
No, and the employee parking lot would be in the back and the, and there's a parking for the, for the patients in the front.
I know there's certain requirements that the, for the vehicle by state law when it transports, but I didn't know loading, unloading, you, you kind of glazed over that part and I, I didn't get that.
No, that's a good point that you made and that's, that goes to even if the state didn't require it, this best practices, making sure that deliveries come into a security area, you know, sometimes you can go right into the Sally Court and the door closes if you don't have that option and it's a fence, a pen fence.
Forgive me if I'm wrong, it's the existing building is there right now, right? Yeah, that's right.
That's something.
Yeah. All right. Does the board have any more questions?
Questions?
All right. Um, so just to jump ahead a little bit on more, we're discussing this ballot question date. Um, Mark Rich called me today, he wants to sit down with the board. He said two things he needs to talk to us about before we do that. Um, one is the issue of marijuana and something else with the opioid issue that's going on, um, that he wants to discuss before we make any decisions on that portion of it. So I'm not sure if this part of it would, um, interject with that. So, um, I'd ask the board to wait until we have a meeting with, um, Mark Rich to hear him out and, and figure out what his concerns are.
When can you meet with us?
Um, we can, we're going to decide and then we'll let him know when we can meet.
One of the concerns though, it's not a question, so if you want, not in public, public comment, but it, one of my concerns is when, when the project was first brought to us.
Mm-hmm.
It was brought to us as a grow facility with a host community agreement that we wouldn't have a retail, uh, retail facility, retail medical facility.
Right.
Um, we went through the whole process, it was a little bit of a process to it. There was actually a second step when you had to go in front of the zone and go to appeals. I went down with, with, as a, as, not as a member, but as a, an audience and kind of explained what happened at the Board of Selectmen to help, you know, them make their decision. And that's kind of been turned one eighty here and you're going for something that was specifically not allowed in the host community agreement in not doing what the whole process was a year ago. So the, I have a little concern. I mean, you know, and, and you would tell us at the last meeting, the chair, chair wasn't here, but you don't have no inclination to going, uh, recreational marijuana. But this, your track record is you weren't going to do retail medical, you're only going to do grow, and now it's, it's more from not going to go do grow to maybe sometime down the line to a retail, to retail medical. And this is where we are. So I have a little confusion there, I have a little.
And, and you did say, and, and I'm going to follow up with Robbie Bobby. You also did say about five minutes ago that, you know, there's a lot, there's a lag time with the state and the federal government with, um, regular marijuana. So this is certainly a, a first step into doing another, just that, you know, a non-medical marijuana dispensary. So, I mean, tho- those words came from, from you sort of, not from us. So, um, and, you know, we do have another host community agreement, which was also, um, specified that they wouldn't do, um, a dispensary as well, that we wouldn't, you know, was part of their host community agreement. So I, I, I was very honest with everybody before I started, I'm going to continue to do that. Um, I have some issues with that, um, not only from a host community point of view and perspective, um, because then it almost like, it almost seems like we're going back again on something that we had already agreed to. And, um, I, I have some concerns about the whole, the whole, um, facility itself. Um, and I just want to make sure that in talking to Mark Rich that, um, you know, some of his concerns come from a legal point of view and that's where I want to hear him out on. Not, it didn't have anything to do with you, it, he called me on, um, because he knew that this was on the, not you, but the medical ballot question was on the agenda tonight. And also he, there's some big thing going on with your opioid thing that he wants to talk to us before we make any decisions.
And the opioid, opioid crisis really is a, a major crisis, especially in the New England States. I mean, in my, my medical experience, I was in the, the emergency medical field for a while and my wife still is, it's grown, it, this area's always had a, a problem with opioids, but it's grown over the last twenty years to a crisis level. Um, kids are dying on the street with, with given Narcan, which is the drug that antagonizes the opioid, opioids. To law enforcement, they're talking about putting in schools, they're putting in, um, all these areas that before were, were those never called for. So there is a concern about the opioid crisis and I, I have seen some, I don't want to call them studies because they're not scientifically based, but there is some convention to the thought that they, they can wean some of the, um, people with the problem of opioid problems onto marijuana and then eventually off the drug altogether. So I, I don't want to discount that. And I don't want to discount some of those things I've seen. So I've done some research on it, um, with the cannabinoids and the CBD, um, with the seizure patients, um, neurostorms and the, neurostorms in their brains and stuff, what's causing it, what they think might be breaking. But there's no science behind it all. And that's one of the issues that there is with it. That's not saying that I don't think it's something that we, we should be looking at as a community. I think it is. I think it's something we should take into consideration. I'm just, my concern is more about the site, to be honest with you. It's not necessarily about, you know, the validity of, do we need this? Is this something that we should be considering? It's more where it is, how close it's going to be to other things. It's more a site issue than it is, from me personally, whether it's, uh, something that, that the community should be embracing or, or not, um, whether it's science or pseudoscience. That's not where I'm coming from. I'm coming more, you know, how far is it going to be from the local house?
Right.
What's the, what's the security going to be? You know, how many people are going to be there? What's your time, hours of operation? I can tell you, I'm not in favor of those hours of operation.
No, I wrote that down too.
So it, it's more of those type things. It's not necessarily, you know, is this needed? Is this a, a good thing or a bad thing for the community?
Right. Yeah, and I guess to just address your concern about like that we got the first thing approved and, and we're coming back and we're changing it. You know, we look at this as a positive, a positive thing and a positive change. I mean, obviously for us, it's, it's a business, but we also look at it as this was approved statewide through referendum, fifty-four, fifty-five percent of the voters support this, you know? And I think in town, it's, it's about the same, same amounts of people that are in support of it. So to us, it's, look, we're going to, we're in this business, we, we own this piece of property, we have a building that reasonably meets all the criteria from a state standpoint, why not, why not put it here and give it a shot? We're already looking at doing this right behind it. So we're not coming in and trying to bait and switch, we just think, look, this is an opportunity. We never really thought that, you know, um, this was something that was a use here. But as we get further along into the business, it, it certainly seems like it, it, it can work. And we think it's a positive asset for the town, both from a financial standpoint and, and from, uh, you know, you have patients that might need access to the medicine, why not give it to them? You know, it's, we're not looking to, to cause any trouble. It's, it's run professionally and I think you get told by a presentation that, you know, really put an extra effort into doing everything exactly right and above and beyond the standards. So, I mean, I guess it's, it, it was just a, a, a change in, in, in game plan. It wasn't intentional, but, you know, we think it's a positive thing.
And I think that what you and Ray do, and I'm sorry, this is the first time I've met you. I know that you guys as businessmen and I know that everything you do is first quality. So I have no issue with that at all.
Yep.
Um, I don't have a problem with the site. I feel that the site is, in my mind, it's further away, it's on the outskirts sort of, and I don't have a problem with that. I do think it needs to be upgraded and things need to take care of. But you said something and you said, um, that you think it's a benefit for the town. That's where I am at. I'm not sure it is a benefit for the town at this point. Um, so that, that's one of the things that I'm struggling for. I think that when I look at things, I have to make sure it's a benefit for the whole town. Um, and, and I'm not sure I'm there yet. I'm not closing the door on that, but I'm not sure that I'm there yet. And, um, I do want to just take my time with this, um, and, uh, make sure that I get it right.
Well, so, thank you for the time tonight.
Oh, absolutely. And we had to listen to it and we wanted to. I mean, it's, you know what I mean? We couldn't make a blind decision one way or the other. So this helped.
Gives you education.
Absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely.
Excellent.
Can use all that education for the next topic, you know, it's not concerning this.
No. And that video was great too. I liked, I didn't really see that part of it. I've seen the Sixty Minutes documentary on it, which they spent more like fifteen minutes on TV and it was like a thing online, but.
Yeah.
It's totally different if that's.
That video is on YouTube. There's a YouTube channel from Wellness Connection of Maine. You actually have a patient testimony, testimonials.
Great.
You know, you get people telling you why. And so this one is the longest, kind of easier to watch, but you can watch more.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So I guess you'll get back to us after you talk to your attorney and, and give us a call.
Yep. And like I said, I just want to make sure that I'm very clear that, that the attorney had, doesn't have anything to do with it.
It was about the rec.
It was about the rec part of it, but I think that we can tie this all together. And should we have any concerns, talk to him at that time.
Great.
All right. And we'll take it under advisement. I'll reach out to you, um, when we're ready to make a decision. I'll put it on the agenda for, for another meeting.
And you know, the other point I just wanted to make, and I think Richard would echo this, is the, the full intention is, is, is the cultivation and the grow and that's going to happen. We look at this as not switching one for the other.
Right.
This, this is, we're looking at this as a complimentary add-on piece to that. In a site that's more of a destination, it's not like it's like right on Main Street, right next to it, it's, we'll just put traffic, but, um, but that's, that was the whole intention. I know that there were other issues with the site, like people plants and things that had to deal with environmental, that had to get sorted out prior to, uh, construction. But the whole intent was to have this on as a complimentary pre-piece to move forward and it wasn't, uh, it wasn't like swapping one for the other.
No, but I think that you need to understand, sort of, I'm going to speak for myself, um, I don't mind seeing how that end of it works before I go out and say like, should I do the retail part of it? You know what I mean? So for me, especially for security and all those issues, like once we get those lined up, then yeah, the next step would more than likely be this. But now it's like, almost like you're throwing everything at us at one time and we have to make sure that everything works. Okay.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank. Um, to the board, do you mind if we do, um, discuss trash recycling so we can get everybody out here?
Yep.
So I'm going to turn it over to the board to help.
Um, at this time, we're going to open for discussion, uh, trash recycling contract, recycling jokes, all these questions. It's time to talk a little bit about some of the issues that we have. So I'll let him speak first and we'll go from there.
Okay. And as you may or may not be aware, I'm assuming you're the representative from Republic since you're aware of that.
Correct. My name's Brian Pennyam, I'm the operations manager for Public Services.
Excellent. Brian, did you have a meeting set up with, um, Health Meeting recently?
Yeah, I was going to try and meet with them on Friday and, uh, unfortunately I got tied up. We had some accidents in some meetings that I, I couldn't get out of.
Okay. Um, did you know he wasn't, did he advise you that he wasn't going to be able to make?
I found out five minutes before close.
Okay. Um, as you may or may not be aware, we've had some complaints as of late. It's actually, oh, nine pages of complaints since July. Um, everything from missing trash pickups to trash being left behind, um, recycling's been picked up and not trash. Um, right up until recently, which, today, I have four complaints today. Um, Beach Bluff Borough area, Tanglewood area, Middle Borough Road, um, trash not picked up, wind blowing it around. Um, and then with the storm, as I'm sure you're aware, we've had, we had some issues with the storm, being a short week because of the holiday, everything got put off a week, a day. And then the storm coming in Thursday, I guess, a decision was made by the company not to pick up trash at all on Friday and make them put it off a week. One of the complaints is from that gentleman who is a veteran, that's a one hundred percent disabled veteran, um, wasn't able to go back and get his trash picked up, pulled out because he didn't realize that you weren't going to pick up trash on Friday. Um, so I just wanted to know if you're aware of these complaints? Um, that's not even the Facebook complaints, that's eight, eight pages of Facebook complaints that are just all pylons. Some of them with pictures of, you know, things not, not taken out of their recycling bins and that kind of stuff. So I didn't know if you were aware of the situation? If you've had any, um, explaining why the situation's occurring, especially in certain areas, um, making the decision not to pick up trash on Friday altogether? To me, that might be a violation of the contract. There's a clause in the contract that says everybody will have their trash picked up at least once a week, may not be on the prescribed day because of situations not, you know, perceived by you, whether it's being acts of nature or, you know, holidays, but you know those are coming. Um, so I, I just was wondering if, if you had anything to say about all these issues?
Let, let me introduce myself, uh, a little bit of my experience and, and let you know that I am new to this division. I came in, in the middle of September. So I am working through some of the issues, but I'm not new to the industry. I started in the industry back in nineteen eighty-seven at eighteen years old for BFI, so I've been around a long time. Um, it is my understanding that we have some service failures. I'm, I'm working through them. I'm not aware of all of them here in Freetown. Um, we're a very large division, so I'm, I'm trying to get my hands around as many as I can. Uh, I understand one of the most recent failures was, it was two components to it. I understand one of the most recent failures was, it was two components to it. One was an equipment failure, the other piece of it was a workforce failure. Essentially on the equipment side of it was, uh, a hole was worn on the recycling side of the co-collect truck. So what was happening is residuals from the coal mingle was leaking out on the ground. That, that is unforeseen and that happens. However, from the workforce standpoint, if you're going down a road and you're in a neighborhood and you go down a cul-de-sac and you're working your way back up, you should have been able to identify that.
Leaving breadcrumb trail.
Correct. Uh, essentially you're following recycling breadcrumbs around. Um, that's my understanding that I believe Derek, Derek, when you were following them.
I was able to locate the truck by following.
Following the breadcrumbs. Um, the other piece of it was, again, a workforce issue. We had two guys on that truck. We were trying to play catch-up. We were getting extended on hours, and what had happened was the co-collect truck, so essentially one side is trash, the other side is recycling. So typically, our guys are instructed to work always from the right side of the truck and not pull both sides of the street. These two gentlemen were starting to get tired, so they decided to open up both doors and work from both sides of the street, which is something we typically don't do, and that's not how they're trained. So what had happened is, as you can imagine, you open up both doors, the neighborhood on a windy day took a wind tunnel. And so as they're emptying trash, trash is being spilled out, and again, it's also my understanding that Derek, when you were following behind them, was that what was some stuff is blowing out of the truck and they were, they were.
It wasn't blowing out. They were throwing the trash in on the right side and it was falling out on the left.
Side and, and then we're picking it up, correct?
Right.
Um, so I've addressed, A, I addressed the truck issue. Um, that truck has been, the floor's being pulled out and welded. Uh, the workforce issue, both those drivers have been retrained. Uh, it explained the importance of providing good service. In regards to the issue on, on the holiday week and then the storm event, it became an hours of service issue for us. As of December eighteenth, hours of service has become a very hot topic within the federal government. They just changed a lot. So for us as a company, our number one priority is always safety. Our goal is always make sure our drivers and, and our helpers always come in same way they left in the morning, physically and mentally. And so we know the sweet spot is when you're driving a truck, where, where you had the lowest rate of risk is fifty-two and a half hours. You are allowed up to sixty, so we will go up to sixty. We had drivers that there was no way they could be within that sixty hours. Still have the thirty-four hour reset within a seven-day period. I'm well aware that some smaller companies went out and did it anyways. We, we couldn't do that, because if a driver goes out and he goes over and he doesn't have that reset and he has an accident, he's, not only is the company in trouble, the driver's in big trouble. And part of these regulations and changes in the regulation of DOT is responsibility also falls on the driver, as their responsibility to not work over hours. And I said, I understand a lot of companies did it. We made the choice and, uh, I, I believe, was, was it Terry Grady and, and you talked about some of the options along with Tricia Barrera?
I wasn't given an option. I had talked to Trish. She had told me that the plan was gonna be to skip a week. I called her back about twenty minutes later, said, you know, is there anything else that we can do? And I was told, no, that is my option. So I was not given any other options for the holiday pickup. I was told, you're, they will not be getting picked up on Friday and that's it. And that was after I had called to see what other options do we have.
Okay, I, I apologize, because, because the way it was communicated to me from her was that she had spoken to you and that this was acceptable. Um, I apologize.
She did speak to me. She told me that we're gonna be skipping the Friday. Said, okay. I talked to a few people, called her back, said, uh, it's, what other options do we have? It's, it's probably not gonna be in, in the best interest. And I was told at that point that, that was our option. So i- at that point, it was, this is what we're gonna do.
And, and again, I, I apologize, because again, I thought this was communicated and agreed upon, and, and again, now I'm finding out that that wasn't the case. I, I will speak with her in the morning, because I, I thought this was something that you guys were agreeable to as well. It seemed to make the most sense versus starting over on, on Monday, running Friday's route on Monday, and then essentially you're putting everybody behind again and disrupting everybody all week long. Um, we, we've done this before with other communities, and it seemed to be the best approach. We'll double up on, on Friday, make sure everything's out. Uh, we did get everything up on campus on, so, uh, residents have gone up on the website. They should have been able to see on, what the schedule was going to be. Did it, by any chance, if you guys could go up and check and see if that was the case?
No, actually, we've had some complaints about contacting, um, your facility in your offices. We had a complaint number that was supposed to call, um, which wasn't getting answered. People went on, tried to find other numbers, were forwarded to a telephone number in Arizona.
Is it the CIC?
Um, not sure. I don't have the number in front of me. I have a lot of other stuff, don't have the number, but it's, it's in the complaint list. That they tried calling the number. It got forwarded to a company, a place in Arizona, they didn't know what Freetown was. You know, they had no idea what Pearson was talking about. Those complaint lines really, they've been lacking.
I, I could say this, what had happened is, for years and years, it was always, the customer service piece of it always flowed directly through whatever district it was. Everybody did it the same way. As companies got bigger, us, Waste Management, they decided to go to what's called the CRC. And, and it's Customer Service Center, and essentially they're hubs that what they do is field phone calls, implement, implement the data into the system, and then send it off. Unfortunately, it hasn't worked out the way it, it was intended. Um, still working out the bugs and.
We're.
Yeah, so unfortunately, you're seeing it now. You call up and, and, and your call could get routed to the wrong hub. And the information doesn't get to the people it needs to get to. So my, my recommendation, if I may, would be going forward, would be to have the supervisors checking in with somebody on a daily basis. Going over any potential missed pickups, any late put-outs.
And that's what Derek does do.
Derek, Derek.
See that happens?
Derek does field complaints.
Yeah, we get complaints. When I first started, I haven't been here that long as well. When I first started, the complaints were like, once a week, twice a week. It's been every day now, for like the last couple of weeks. And Trish is fantastic with responding to the complaints. But it's been frequent lately, and that's been one of the bigger problems among some of the other things. But Trish is very good with responding to them, but the complaints have been coming to us. It feels like if people call Republic, they, they weren't getting anywhere when they call us. I think maybe because we have a direct link to Trish.
Right.
Things are getting, taken care of a little quicker that way.
And that, and that's really what we've tried to do with communities is supervisors should have the direct relationship with everyone here. So that, again, on a daily basis, touching base, here's what came in, can you go back? Supervisor, even means supervisor's going back to pick up truck, grabbing the trash from recycling, bringing it over to the truck, emptying it, and bringing the barrels and bins back. Um, if that hasn't been taking place, again, we'll make sure that it stops taking place going forward. As I said, it's, it's been a process since I got here. We have, we, we have had some service failures that we're trying to work through. The event last week with the stu-, with the storm was brutal. Uh, we ran, simply ran out of hours.
Well, you, you made reference to some of the smaller companies, and some of the towns around us have some of the smaller companies. Rochester, for example, has ABC. They picked up on Sunday. They picked up Friday's trash on Sunday. Acushen has Holland Disposal. They picked up on Sunday. Um, New Befford has ABC. They picked up on Sunday. Dyton was with gorgeous trucking. The company used to be here. Um, they picked up on Swansea, uh, Sunday. Swansea did a Monday pickup, even though it was a holiday. Uh, Holland Disposal picked up on Monday. And the city of Tonkin has Republic. Um, I don't know if you're familiar with when they picked up, but they picked up Friday's on Monday.
What that was, was a skim, um, they wanted just forty-four picked up. They put it up that we were supposed to run the whole entire route. And essentially what had happened is they asked it, before we started Monday's routes, if we could run the section of Winter through Kohanit. And then came back and said, can you run Winter through Kohanit and then all the way down with it? So we at least get all the stuff off the face. And then, and, and we kind of triaged all week long as.
But that was an option they were given to, you kind of worked it out, kind of worked it out with them, which.
Like on, uh, it happened on like a, like Sunday night.
Right. We weren't given that option. That, that was one of my concerns. And talking about smaller companies, obviously, you're one of the biggest companies. You're an annual revenue nine point four billion dollar company with a net worth of six hundred and thirteen million dollars, twenty-seven thousand municipalities, thirty thousand nationwide employees and nineteen thousand trucks. So, you know, the smaller companies, when they say, hey, you know, we don't have the workforce, we only have seven trucks and ten guys, you kind of have to work with them. Even though they went out and did the Sunday pickups and the Monday pickups for the Friday, you're a corporation that has over thirty thousand national employees. That's kind of hard to say, well, we can't have anybody come in because we don't have any trucks. We don't have any vehicles. You have a wealth of trucks. You have a wealth of the vehicles. You have the payroll to be able to pay those people. It's, it's, it's hard for me to balance that with the small companies that don't have all those resources, but yet did still get the job done. Were at least given options and said, this is the best we can do. Maybe we can only do half of Friday's on Sunday and half of Friday's on Monday, something to that effect. Where we weren't given any of those options. It was basically no, pick it up next week, which didn't get related necessarily to the people right away, that all put their trash out the next day. That we're still trying to do trash, we're still trying to do snow pickup, snow collection, we're putting down, because if you remember, we had a big storm on the Thursday.
Right.
The Friday, we were still trying to plow all those accessory roads that weren't the main roads, that now have trash out, but because people need to get rid of their trash, had trash out. So we had to deal with those issues on, on top of it, not to mention the, the wind blowing the trash around and all that. So those are some of my concerns. Those are some of the concerns. When the board last year voted to go with your corporation, because you're a lot bigger corporation, you gave a better bid. I thought would be alleviated. I thought, well, the least I will get out of this is, you know, we don't need to have to worry about, you know, a truck breakdown. He loses half the route because he's only got three trucks. This is, you know, we have thousands of trucks. If a truck breaks down, we'll throw another one in service and you're good to go. And it's kind of not what's happened, not the situation. I know the corporate, you're a corporation, you're there to make money. I, I, I'm, myself is a small business owner, nowhere near these numbers, I wish I was. But you have to have contingency plans and you have to have spare vehicles, so if something does happen, you can throw somebody right in and move on. So those are some of my concerns. We've had some issues, um, and I, you know, you, you're new to the, to the, to this part of it all, and I'm welcome aboard. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm kind of unloading all this on you, but you know, in a lot of this, you weren't even here for some of this. It, it truly goes back to July. You know, we had twenty-one complaints already in January, the month's only half over. We had nine in December. We had, you know, four in November, two in October, three in September. Not bad areas, you say, no. We didn't have the snowstorms. We didn't have these snowstorms in August. There was twelve complaints in August. And back in July, uh, eight complaints in July. So we've been fielding complaints all along. Yes, because of the storm, yes, because of the holidays. You know, that was all crammed into one area, but it's, it's, seems like it's a systemic problem. And when you have stress on that systemic problem, it really pronounces it. And to me, that's what's going on. So I, I hope you can take this as some constructive criticism, not just criticism, and maybe find where you can do better in, in picking up the trash, get it, get it done. And, you know, if you have these issues, if we have a place that we can reach out to, we have some communication both ways, not just one way flowing in. That would be, you know, conducive to helping in the situation.
Okay, but why don't we do this? Because, because again, that, you know, we're not perfect. Big companies, small companies are not perfect. It's, small companies, sometimes they, they're willing to take different options. I know they all ran on Sunday. They just violated hours of service. Every single driver they have.
They do and they don't. So if you have some guys that are part-time guys and they, they can be pressed in and not violate their fifty-two hours or sixty hours, they can't. You're a bigger corporation. I don't know what your work schedule is, if anybody got a day off on Thursday that didn't count towards that, tho- those hours. So those hours were still attainable. If you didn't put in ten hours on Thursday because you had major snowstorm, you didn't have your trucks on the road, those workers could still work those hours.
But what it is, is because it's a, a seven-day, a, a rolling seven days for the sixty, so they, they get Thursday out because of the storm. They work Friday, so they didn't get that thirty-four hour reset. So within sixty hours, within the next rolling seven days, they're out of hours again. So effectively, on Wednesday afternoon, every day beyond Wednesday afternoon is a violation of, of the DOT hours. Because they never had that thirty-four hour reset. Until you have that thirty-four hour reset, the week never resets. Um, and that's kind of where we were at. We were at that point where we had to make some difficult decisions, because it was Christmas and New Year's. As you guys know, the two hottest weeks of the year to deal with from, from a trash business. They're the busiest. You lost a day. They have the highest volume. And those are the days you do, the weeks you do not want to have failures, and then we threw a storm event in the middle of it. And, you know, I, I'm here to tell you, we had failures. Now, I'm not here to make excuses for it. It is what it is. It happened. Uh, what I'd like to do is, maybe on a monthly basis, come in and sit with you. Have, have Derek continue to work with Trish, and on, every month, come in the selectmen's meeting and see where we're at.
Yeah, but I don't mean to cut you off, but we shouldn't have to sit here and babysit you.
No.
And nor should Derek, and I shouldn't have to take the time to talk to you on a monthly basis about trash that we have been fielding. All these complaints since July. Just shouldn't happen. Your, your corporation, it's big enough. It shouldn't happen. And, and you also have it in your contract, as in trash should be picked up on a weekly basis. So why would you put that something in the contract that you can't meet? So no, I, I don't want to have Derek have a monthly conversation. I don't even want to have Derek have a, a, a weekly conversation with you. This stuff can't happen. It can't continue to happen. When is the contract up?
About a year. A year and a half.
Okay, uh, I don't mean to pile on, okay?
But unfortunately, you're here to.
But in, 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 you're in a spot. It, it's not you that're making these decisions. Really, if you ask me, your company's too big. That's, that's the root of the problem. Okay? It, it actually is really too big. So it has all this, it has its own bureaucracy. It's, you know, which, and, and, uh, nothing here is personal. I, I want to go, not only the, the situation with the holiday and the snowstorm, okay? I kind of get it, okay? That could be passed on, I, my opinion, my, my personal opinion. If it wasn't this problem, this persistent problem, uh, with these everyday complaints. And I have watched your drivers, your driver, and there, there's two big things. Now, I came on the board back in April, and I became the chairman of the board of health. And I was advised of this issue with complaints. And the, the, the big problem that I have is, one is, our secretary is fielding and handling complaints on trash. That she shouldn't have to, because we have a private contractor that is supposed to do that job. Her, her week, there's hours in her week that take on, okay, she, she calls Trisha, okay, she goes up. The supervisory level, Trish and whoever else has, has, has been remarkable. They, they've responded to the complaints. I, I know that they, they've done a good job. They, she's done a good job. The real thing is the driver part, okay? And I don't know, but here's a couple of my complaints. Driver empties a barrel. And he never looks into the barrel to make sure he has completed the emptying of the barrel. Kind of elementary, okay? Especially, I mean, okay, I can see a new driver on, and hey, you know, okay, I gotta remember that, okay? You know, in two or three times maybe, okay? But it should become part of his natural operation to check and make sure the barrel is empty. Okay, do we, do you agree with me there?
Absolutely.
Exactly, okay. He wears gloves, okay? That's one of the reasons he wear, he should wear gloves, right? Because, okay, yeah, you might have to loosen up some stuff. There, he'll, he'll drop something in the process. Okay, that, that's, doesn't reach down and pick it up. I've seen this. He's, he knew, well, he, he shouldn't know. Okay? I, one complaint, there was a complaint, a, a cardboard, a container of cardboard in one, at one residence, which he ignored. I went to, I, I saw it. The, the wrong barrel was filled with cardboard. I, I, I've done my supervising of my own. I, I, I've had that experience. What that tell, told me is, he didn't want to pull it out, loosen it up. He knew it wasn't on go, so he ignored it. Okay, now, you can say I'm, I'm, you know, reading things in that might, so these are the things that I think are the real problem. That we have had, not had in the past. And that's my, my biggest concern. Okay, we had a kind of a perfect storm, okay? It wasn't, it wasn't to our satisfaction that how it was carried out. That's one problem. But the, the problem, the real problem is these little things like that. The driver, and, okay, I can see if a driver has to, uh, you know, take a load and empty it and then come back and he forgets exactly where he, he, uh, oh. Ended it, ended his route. He misses one or two houses. Okay, again, that's something for you to handle. But when it happens over and over again, and these are the things. But when it happens over and over again, and these are the things that, oh, are most distressing to me. Now, I'll tell you, sir, if it, the, the issue was, you know, when does a contract expire? Right now, I would say my vote would not be for your company. Nothing on you, nothing on the supervisor between you. But between you and the top and you and the bottom, there are issues. And I'll tell you, if I was, if I was, if, if he was an employee of this town, your driver, he would be well on his way to disciplinary action towards termination. Okay, that's, that's my, my feeling.
And, and again, I, I understand that and I, and I understand the issues that are going on here. And I, and I understand what you're saying about disciplinary action. Again, we focus on trying to retrain them first.
Oh, most certainly.
Yeah, because, because we don't want to lose anybody.
Right, no, I, I, I understand. That's my, I mean.
To Charlie's point, I understand, when we come to renegotiate this contract, these people are going to show up. And these people that have legitimate complaints.
I agree.
Are going to be telling us, we listen to the people. They're going to be telling us why not to sign with you. Now, this may all turn around, they might, you know, your company might do a bang job from the rest of the, rest of the time out and everybody tells us, absolutely resign. But when it comes to resign, these complaints people are going to show up at the meeting. And we're going to have an ear for those people. So, you know, you have a good opportunity here, coming in as a fresh start. Look at your operation, see where the deficits are, where the deficiencies are. And, you know, take the appropriate action because, you know, we're, we're trying to tell you, there's a, it is an issue. You know, now's the time for you to step in and fix the issue for us.
Oh, without question. I have no illusions about some of the deficiencies we have within the company. We're working through them. It's, you know, it's that old elephant mentality, how eating elephant one bite at a time. And we're trying to prioritize things and get them straight away and fix functional issues. Part of it is, is the fact that we are a very large company. It's much easier to manage a much smaller company. But I, I give you my word, we're going to work through this. And, and I, I'd like to believe that, that when this con, when we get to the end of this contract and it comes time that you get, for negotiating over a new contract, that we have done everything that you want us to. And if we haven't, I'll be the first one sitting here saying, we failed you.
That, a lot of these, to Charlie's point, a lot of these complaints, not these complaints, a lot of complaints I've heard have to do with cardboard. And the two-by-two tied and twined and all, people don't get.
Is he just leaving, is, is that what's happening? He's just leaving it behind?
If it's not two-by-two entwined, it, it gets left behind. And we've had a lot of complaints, a lot of the Facebook complaints are about the two-by-two twined, bundled, can't be wet and all this other stuff. So, to Charlie's point, that was a recurring theme on the Facebook currently. These complaints here are the gambit from streets getting missed to, there seems to be an area in the, the one, one specific, a problem one specific area, which is that whole Tanglewood Beach Bluff area, yeah.
I think part of that may be that a large part of that area is very narrow, actually the private streets.
We've, we've been talking about that. It's a difficult area to get down with a truck.
And, and I understand that if, if I was a truck driver and, you know, I got to take a mirror off or something and I've got to hear about that, you know? My self-interest is, I'm going to cover myself. And, and that's, and that's something that we might have to, you know, hey, you might say, hey, I can't put a truck down there, okay? I mean, I, I, I know at one time, Trish, I think she drove her pickup truck down.
Typically, you have supervisors go down.
And, and pick up, you know, down, down, probably servicing at least a half a dozen houses. I mean, if that's an issue and it ha, we, then we have, that's an issue for us, okay? If you can't get a truck down to an address, that's an issue for us. That's not your issue. But, you know, you have to come to us with it. But, you know, we have to work those things out. But a lot of these things are reoccurring issues. I mean, there was one place where a woman had her barrels on, on a spot and she had a flower guy. And he was dumping, he was just chucking barrels and it was ending up in his flowers. It was like third or fourth time she finally tracked him down. He said, oh, I didn't, she's saying, he said, I didn't recognize, I didn't realize. Well, you, you've got to be a little bit more res, rel, look at your surroundings, what are you doing?
Oh, I agree.
And I, yeah, I, I, I know you got, like I said, yourself, from what I've understood, your, your supervisor Trish, she's been very, very good. It's like I said, it's on one end.
It's a foundational issue.
Yes, yes, exactly. One end, the driver, the other end, management, which you don't have any control. You're not responsible.
I think you have the message.
Absolutely.
All right. I don't want to meet you again next month, sorry. You might be the nicest guy in the world, I really don't want to see you back there.
She tells me the same thing every week.
At that point, I, I think this room would be full.
Yes.
If we were to see you back there.
No problem.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Okay, a student signed up for a spending letter for snow and ice submitted by the highway surveyor.
Brian Penny.
Brian Penny, I first heard of him. I was covering this.
I'll make a motion to have you hold the services.
I'll second that.
Hey, all in favor? And can I just be on the record, and I think the board will agree with me that Chuck and the drivers, the snowplowers have done more than a phenomenal job. The roads in surrounding towns, and I will not say those, what those towns are, who are horrid and are in no comparison to the level of, of, of like actual time roadway I saw.
Friday morning, I went out and my road in front of me was basically down to their pace.
Yeah, it's just phenomenal. And I, and I want to thank Chuck and I want us to be on the record as in thanking him. And as well as all the drivers that he, he takes care of, so anyway. Moving on, renew annual twenty eighteen license for Beef Bluff, Beef Bluff Auto.
Oh, Beef Bluff.
What did I say?
Beef, Beef Bluff.
Beef Bluff. I'm starving, I haven't eaten.
We're here today, okay. I'll make a motion to renew the license for Beef Bluff.
Thank you.
Second the motion.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
I think they'd do better as Beef Bluff.
We talked about that a little bit, so, are you guys, what, I don't care, we can have Mark. Obviously, we'll have Mark come down.
They come on the middle of our, marijuana.
I'm, I'm one step ahead of you guys.
What are you trying to say?
But you guys have to, I mean, I'd like to do it sooner rather than later, so if.
Just remember that, come February.
Yes, I know.
We're running out of time though.
You want to do it next week?
When are you going, when's your?
I would be probably leaving February first.
So we only have this.
And when are you coming back?
And I'm not going to be coming back until March four.
So, no, no, we can, we can talk to him and vote on a date at that same meeting.
Oh, I understand that.
Okay, so what, we can do it next week?
What's, what's next week? Next week is.
The twenty-third, the twenty, we have a building committee meeting.
So you want to do it before the building committee meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
What, was there, was the building committee meeting?
Wednesday.
Okay, that's the only night that I wouldn't be there. But I made arrangements for something else before.
I have, I have another meeting that night. Do you want to see if we can make it for Thursday or?
Uh, the building committee meeting?
I have regional FinCon Thursday. Well, I don't know if I have regional FinCon.
You do have a meeting on Tuesday with the legislative delegate before I add it on to that. You're working on that.
I know.
You're going for it though. Monday night.
They'll vote night to morning.
Well.
You know, instead of doing it during the day unless.
Do we know if I have FinCon? Because that's, I had, I went to FinCon last week.
It's on there. It's on there. I don't know. Want to find out?
If you don't mind.
No, I don't mind.
Is it on the calendar yet?
It's on the calendar, but.
It was on the calendar for the other night and I barged into negotiations and got some dirty looks.
It was on the calendar they provided to us.
Thought one of the former selectmen that's now a member was going to tackle me.
Get you down.
All right, we can move on. Go ahead.
Okay. Discuss a lot of Chase Road submitted by DCR.
Is that why you're here, Michael?
That's what they're waiting for.
Okay, come on.
I was just here to hear what was going to get said. Come up.
So I should have taken that right after this, but sorry.
That's okay.
David.
Not on the clock, it's fine.
Used his superior negotiating skills to try and negotiate us a little bit of deal. They were offering us fifty thousand dollars. And basically we had to clean up the, the site. Major, the only major change I see is sixty thousand dollars. From a hundred and fifty thousand original offer. Looks like they're going to clean up the major stuff on the site, which includes the house, the boat, the shed, the trailer, that kind of stuff. But they still want us to pick up the minor stuff on site. They also, I don't, doesn't really speak to it, but I, I don't think they really want to do any cleanup if they find anything on the site.
Right.
Which is my biggest concern. Because if we need to do site cleanup, it's going to be much more than the sixty thousand dollars that they're offering us. Where, that's where the, when we had the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there was plenty of room that if we had to mitigate any, any contamination issues, we'd have that, those funds. I, I don't think it's a good idea for this town to run into a negative situation.
No.
True. But I believe that when it comes to the cleanup, they would handle, I believe, right, right? They would handle such things, okay, yes, there are no envi, that, that no environmental contamination is found beyond what is typically associated, such as lead and asbestos.
Right.
I, I mean, you know, life's a gamble. But I, I think that probably they would pretty much cover what I, I have seen on the site. You know, cursory look at the site. Most of it is, is a lot of it's like tires and there might be a vehicle rear end there or something like that. So, just to that point, I, yes.
Yeah, they're going to take care of the lead and asbestos and stuff, if there's anything found in the building.
Right.
I, I was more concerned though, if there was any dumping that was going on there that we weren't, we weren't familiar with. And maybe that has something to do with some testing. Maybe we can have them do some testing. Put a caveat that do some testing, if they find it's all negative, then we go ahead with the sale, make a continued of the sale. If they do testing and find it's going to be an issue, then we don't turn it over to them and we, you know, take it in-house and look at what our options are at that point.
What's Concon feel about this?
Through, they haven't taken a formal vote on it because they've been waiting for you guys to take a formal vote on it. But we look at it from the two different perspectives. You get the house and the two acres out by the road and then all that land that's out in the back. Overall, supportive of the project as a whole. Definitely supportive of the land out in the back going to conservation. The house, they haven't really discussed more than just cursory. The house has been a, a sticking point, the house has been an issue. On the whole though, I'd, I'd call it supportive because it's, it's that whole package deal of, the town's going to put the hundred and twenty-five acres that we're still going to have in the back under conservation. The abutting landowner's going to sell the five hundred acres. Whatever's going to happen with the house is going to happen with the house. I do know, having spoken with Sean from the DCR a couple of times though, their, their concern, particularly with that hundred and twenty-five acres in the back as the timeline, they need that transfer to happen by early to mid-March. Even if we're not going to sell them the house, they still need that to happen by their grant deadline. So that's needing to have a town meeting sometime in the next six to eight weeks roughly, which is plausible. You have a, basically a fourteen-day posting period, you decide tonight to have one. Schedule it for fourteen days from now. Ally would shoot everybody that's sitting here right now, but other than that, it would work.
Well, we're probably going to have one anyhow, or something else, right? Don't we have something else to do a town meeting for? America wanted questions to valid, but that was something.
Was there police station bonding?
No, that was not.
That's not going to happen now. That's the only other thing.
No, it'll happen now, but it's not going to happen now.
Right, you know what I meant.
No, I didn't, I want to make sure that's clarified.
It's not going to happen right now.
Right. Other than that little bit of scariness about what actually is out there, it's, I'd classify Concon as generally positive favorable toward accomplishing. As much of this is reasonable.
Realistically, if we raise the house and cleaned up the site, you're talking probably twenty thousand dollars on the high side. So, if we're going to incur more of expense than that, I mean, I'm saying if we did it ourselves and then turned it over to conservation.
Right.
Versus turn it over to the state and then maybe whacked with a huge cleanup bill on the other end. As long as I know there's nothing on the site and we're not going to get anything on the outside, I'm, I'm all for turning it over to the state. It's just.
Yeah, it's that unknown background.
It's the unknown. If we can clarify that unknown and quantify it, so we know what it is, then I'm, I'm all for it.
All right, so why don't we have, are you all right with that, Charlie?
Yeah.
Having them reach out, sorry, Charlie, I forgot you were on Concon, I could ask you. That was so awful of me, I, I really, I feel awful right now.
I would add, just to, to beef up what Charlie said a few minutes ago, in talking with Sean on the phone, and I know it's not in the letter, but he said basically the same thing. They're looking at tires, things that's sitting evidently on the ground. Their mindset is not that there's buried drums or anything out there. So they're, they're kind of on the same page, just whatever their reluctance to actually write that sentence down. That's a state bureaucracy thing, I think. I don't really understand it, but.
I don't, I don't think that should become our issue in this process. If there's something there that already goes back as if it was a reg, a, a eventual transfer between, you know, two willing parties. So, I don't have a problem with this, other than, yes, we're not going to go up and clean up, you know, whatever, you know.
I don't want to go clean up, uh, to spend like a hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, right, no, oh, no, no, no.
Maybe we have our crack negotiator go back and, and, you know, voice some of our concerns and say, you know, once we, if the state's willing to put a little time in and, and, you know, look at the site, make, and either put in the contract that they're going to be responsible for the cleanup if there's any, or look at it ahead of time and say, no, we're comfortable saying that we're okay and.
Or can that part of the contract be null and void?
Yeah.
Absolutely. That might be the thing to work. My understanding.
If any contamination is found, then that part of it would be null and void and left to go forward.
The kind of interesting thing here is that my understanding is really the parcel, the building, that parcel on Chase Road would be basically used as.
Parking.
Parkified.
Absolutely.
The access to the other land. So, if there is something there, you know.
Still got a reason to pave it anyways, maybe not pave it, but.
Right.
That's what they want, parking that's invisible from the road so that.
When they start digging drainage ditches and stuff, that they say, oh, what happened?
So what do we have, a meeting in two weeks, Ally? Not until February fifth. And you're leaving on Monday?
First.
First.
Out next week.
So you're, just from what you were saying before, the town meeting would have to be happening by pretty much when you're getting back from your trip to meet their grant deadline.
Do you know exactly when the grant deadline is, is the thirtieth, March thirtieth?
They have to close with the other property owner by March thirtieth. And I guess the grant funding to pay for that portion, from what I'm gathering, is contingent on us taking care of the hundred and twenty-five acres prior to that closing date. So, originally they had said to us, it needed to be done by late February. And then Dave kind of going back and forth with them a little bit, they gave into early March. But they really did not want to push it any further than early March.
So, in relation to the hundred and twenty-five acres, all we're, all we have to do is convey to the Conservation Commission.
Right.
And control the property, so that's.
Right, and if that were a donation, if this were somebody just giving it to us, we could do it right now. But because it's an old tax title or otherwise town-owned property, it has to go through this town meeting process to do it. I think it's.
But they're only looking for what, three acres or something now, right?
Really, totally two.
Two. And that's. Two. And that, so really, all this pertains is the two acres. The hundred and twenty-five acres, we could do at any, any meeting, right?
We could do that at any town meeting by early March. That has to be done before
That has to be done for this also.
Right. So that really, like I was saying, has to be done in the next six to eight weeks to work into their timeline.
Why does the states have anything to do with our conserva, turning over our property to conservation?
Their grant had something to do with protecting that total area, and they had to show that it was protected. So because they're not purchasing that from us anymore, it had to be under conservation control by the deadline to show that it was protected. It couldn't be just general municipal land, because it could be technically, it could be sold or anything else.
What, in a letter? Quote unquote, they have?
I don't honestly know. They, they've
Even a letter from Jonathan Moore?
I mean, that's something you could certainly ask, but they've been pretty consistent in saying it needed to actually be done by that date, so I don't know.
To have town meeting convey the property to the Conservation, right?
Into the, it's just in
Right.
Quantify the sale.
Right, yeah, there had been, because originally the sale article, as it was voted, included the other land, and it was gonna reduce it down to just the two lots, the two acres. That would be one vote, and the transfer to conservation would be the other vote. I mean, realistically, it's a special town meeting. It only needs ten people. It's probably take fifteen or twenty minutes to do it and be done with it. It's just a matter of deciding
Yeah, but it's, it's putting in the newspaper, it's Jackie, and making sure that her
Yeah.
You don't need to put it in the newspaper.
No, we didn't, yeah, we don't do the newspaper anymore.
They posted it on both sides of the town, but it's not full.
So that's why with the, with the bylaw, the minimum and all that is fourteen days.
Fourteen days.
Fourteen days, for special.
It's just a matter of deciding when and making sure.
And if anything else you wanna put on, too, if there's any of them, you wanna put the, um, any other articles for the, what do you call it? Stabilization articles or anything like that?
Yeah, that would be a way to, to pick up the article. We didn't get it done in October.
Yeah, I would mean that people would have to application.
Maybe.
Ten people.
Ten people. We don't want that many.
Ten people, right?
Yeah, we, yeah.
Five.
Charlie, what you feeling about if we move forward with this when you're not here, if you can't make the meeting?
I will state my preference now.
Oh, yeah, I, I think, I think I'm fine with it as long as, as long as it doesn't cost us a hundred thousand dollars for cleanup. I'm absolutely fine with it. I have no hiccup sending at all.
I don't have a, I, I no longer have the issues with it that I did when I voiced objections toward a couple of weeks ago. I did speak to Scott prevention. I told him my, my feelings were David's unable to get us a better deal here than he ever was. And, you know, it's, I, I know they kinda hold him, you know, feet to the fire, so to speak, with saying this grant and so forth. But I don't have a problem with the consult, okay?
Would you be willing to allow us to set up a meeting in your abstention?
Certainly.
Before when you get back, you're probably, I, I wouldn't say anything before, first of all.
Right.
So you'll be back anyhow, but the actual meeting?
Yeah, I, I don't.
And I
I'm retired. Take care.
I wish.
I am flexible. I'm flexible.
You are very flexible. I noticed that before. You even doing that TV twelve?
Yeah, yeah.
The Sorry.
We're getting over two hours.
Getting punchy now.
The, uh, is it okay to have David go back and see if we can clean up a little bit, make this a little more advantageous for the town?
Yeah.
I'll actually make that a motion to have David go and try to renegotiate this a little better and address some of our concerns.
So my correction, my major concern is just making sure that we don't become liable if they find
That is the major concern.
That's it.
That's, that's
Yep.
If you can give us a little more money, great, earns a salary, but
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
As the only representative from the Conservation Commission here, I feel like a
Sorry. A new IRS rate for mileage.
Oh, what are we up to? Fifty-five cents? Fifty-four point five, 'cause that point five cents, you can't get that one. I'll make a motion to accept.
Yes, then I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve and sign the schedule for the new twenty eighteen Dodge Charger Cruiser lease.
Yeah, let's get the roll. I'll, I'll make a motion to sign.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sign letter to Bristol County Advisory Board to allow David Demont to be designated on behalf of Mr. Joe's Robbie Bobby in his absence.
What happened with that is we have a meeting scheduled, the Bristol County, I guess the Bristol County Commissioners wanted to redo Bristol Aggie. There's been a couple of meetings. We've been back and forth with a whole slew. They wanna do some additions. Unfortunately, they scheduled a walk-through the day after the big storm on the Saturday with sub-zero temperatures. I wasn't able to get away from my current employee on that day.
Your real job.
My real job, the one that pays my bills. David went in my stay, which he hadn't attended some of the other meetings anyhow, did a walk-through. They scheduled a meeting right after the walk-through, figured they'd strike while the iron was hot, which they did. David contacted me during the meeting, during the walk-through, after the, the walk-through was over before the meeting. I relieved my concerns that I had with the project. Basically, the funding, which wasn't addressed in any of the documentation that we had received, how they're gonna fund it. They were looking for a hundred and three million dollars to redo the school. Got a little bit of a clarification, so I mean, per pupil, the price range isn't too bad at all. And we only have, I think, currently six students in the school system, so it really doesn't affect us that much. The biggest, biggest cities, I've watched, absolutely more children, a lot more. So I spoke to the representative. She advised me that I could have David vote in my stay, as long as they get a letter from the town, confirming that he was able to vote in my stay, and he did vote, actually, he abstained from the vote after hearing their presentation. He still had some concerns about funding concerns, and he abstained from the vote. It did pass unanimously from the other voting members that did attend, which was a very small turnout because of the situation.
So, go ahead. All right, so as a follow-up, 'cause I've been watching it happen closely, so yeah, it's a hundred and three million dollar project. It will be divided by those people that are in, in Bristol Aggie. Right now, they have us average at ten students, even though we only have six, but that's the only way that they can show how much it's gonna cost each town. So it's gonna cost you the fifty-five hundred plus the tuition that we already spent. So it's gonna be an additional, probably around fifty thousand dollars on top of that educational budget.
And they've applied for grants, fifty-two percent's gonna come from grants. There's another portion that kicks in because it's a trade, classified as a trade school, agricultural school. So there's some more money, but to Lisa, like Lisa said, we're gonna
We're gonna eat about fifty thousand dollars extra.
Fifty-five hundred per student, I believe, right? Now, I didn't, I didn't get the answer whether we have to pin, fund for ten students or just the students that are ten, so if we have three next year, it's, it's only
It's a fluctuating thing, because if you look at, if you look at their grid, their grid is anticipating that since they're gonna do the renovations, they're gonna have more pupils attend. So they're basing their, their grid on us having always more people, more kids attend. But if it drops, then, then our portion actually increases.
So we have, we don't have a floor, but our, this, whatever we, we have to do, it's just gonna go up, per student, price is gonna go up in?
Per student for debt on top of already the tuition, so
Right, I'm not even talking about tuition. I'm talking about just the debt portion.
Yeah, this is just debt, yep.
If we don't have our ten students, then instead of being fifty-five hundred on ten students, it might be eighty-five hundred on seven students.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So those are some of the answers I couldn't get originally.
I'll make a motion that, uh,
There's a vote here.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, send a letter, designate David as a representative on that Saturday.
Second.
Forever and ever.
Yeah, forever and ever.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, sign amended annual town election notices submitted by town clerk Jackie Brown.
Yeah, here's one small obstacle, not obstacle, but issue. We just reappointed the planning board member last week, and we haven't reappointed until, till two thousand nineteen, because no, this was already submitted by us, signed by us, submitted by Jackie, signed by us. If she's doing an amendment, shouldn't that position go on the amendment?
Is it one, one, one board member?
You should have been two. This is one seat that's open for five years, and then there's a second seat that wouldn't be open because we had to just fill the vacancy. So I was a little confused about that.
Well, does, does the appointment only go up until?
Next election, but where we already had submitted this and
But is this next election meaning this election?
It would have been normally. If this happened in October, yes, but where we already had submitted, where she already had submitted this to us and we approved it and signed it, then she couldn't amend it, but now that it's being amended, I
But why would that change? Wouldn't it just be always up until that election? Unless I'm missing something.
Once she puts the ballot together here and we sign off on the ballot, then she can't amend it. Well, then it, we can't amend it.
I don't know if the Secretary of State would approve the, you know, the, um, it to the next Right, that's what my point is. The planning board member. The Secretary of State already approved this just because it was already printed on the ballot. The Finance Committee was already printed on the ballot, and then she's just changing the two-year term to a one-year term, 'cause that was her error. But because she would be adding on the planning board.
You could be changing the terms.
It's the type of amendment, is it lawful?
I think it might be. I don't know for certain, but I think That's what I'm thinking, because it's by, it's by bylaw that the terms are the terms, so 'Cause she already had committed it to the Secretary of State before she knew someone was leaving from the planning board.
Right, well, that, right, that's why I said if it done, if he had retired or resigned in October,
Right.
it would have made this, and it would have been two positions for planning, one for a one-year term and one for a five-year term. So it's the type of amendment, you think?
I think it might be.
Okay.
Do, why don't we just approve it, and then if it has to change, she'll submit another change anyway if she can change it, and then you can just sign.
Well, we appointed him, we appointed him thinking it was going two thousand nineteen anyhow. I don't have a problem with that. I've just, then this popped up that we're doing an amendment, and why don't we just amend it correct, so everything's correct, was all, all my point was.
Right.
But that's fine. All right, make a motion to assign her amendment.
Because, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't think you can change the term of somebody, because he's fulfilling an, an unexpired term, right?
Only to the next election.
Right, so the next election would be
Not for that person, only to the next election cycle. No, like when I was appointed, I was appointed midterm. I was appointed in December.
Up until the election.
Until the election, and then
Then that would be a four-year
No, it was just the remainder of that term.
Yeah, okay.
So say, there was three years left on that term, so I ran for the three years left, 'cause it's normally a five-year term.
But I was thinking, like, it's a five-year, and you're just gonna appoint them for a year, then it would be a four-year term, but I think it's because of that.
Yeah, it's only supposed to get appointed till the next election cycle, but, okay.
All right. Approve order selection minutes from December fourth, eighth, eighteenth, and January eighth, twenty eighteen. All in favor?
Aye. Discussion crash pickup.
Just pick over the abatement for fire.
Yeah, fire baby's assignment.
That's why I skipped the rule. All right, approve ambulance abatements for November twenty seventeen, as submitted by fire chief Gary Soria. In the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty and twenty-two cents, and also for the, um, November thirtieth, Comstar, in the aggregate amount of six thousand six fifty-two seventy-four, for a total contractual allowances and write-offs of thirty-six, six twelve ninety-six.
Make a motion to endorse.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'm done.
Okay. Health, are you done with health?
I'm done with that.
All right, personnel, I have a change of status form for John Piner. John is up for a length of service increase for patrolman four-two, step two, with a base of twenty-four fifty-one, educational incentive twenty-six ninety-six, to patrolman four-two, step three, base of twenty-six fifteen, educational incentive to thirty-one thirty-eight.
I'll read the motion to, uh,
Accept that as read.
Second.
Motion made. Motion made in second. Discussion on the motion, here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Taylor Podowski, length of service increase, this is dated twelve seventeen nineteen seventeen, signal operator seventeen twenty-two. Twelve nineteen seventeen, sorry, twenty seventeen. Um, nineteen seventeen, pit, to part-time signal operator eighteen oh four, this is what it's, length of service increase.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, oh, over, over the, uh, request.
You wanna sign it?
Do I wanna sign it?
Yeah, make a motion to sign.
Oh, yeah, sign it, whatever.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second, and discussion on the motion to sign the length of service increase. Okay. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, change of status, uh, change of status form for Timothy McIntosh, senior clerk administration. This also, I believe, is length of, step increase, length of service increase from sixteen fifty-nine to eighteen sixty-six.
Make a motion to sign.
Second.
Motion made in second, and discussion on the motion, here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, this is a change of status form for Lynette Ouzel, assistant collector, step four, twenty-three ninety-nine, to assistant collector, step four, twenty, twenty-four eleven. Length of service increase, reevaluation of existing job.
Make a motion to sign.
Second.
Motion made in second, and discussion on the motion, here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
James Gonville is resigning his position as a full-time paramedic firefighter. Uh, we have a letter, uh, change of status form from twenty-four forty-two to resign. Is there a motion?
Motion made.
Motion made. Motion made to endorse. Any second on that motion? Motion made in second, all in favor?
That was hysterical.
Can we send a letter to him thanking him for his service to the town? Zachary Pathamas, we had a meeting the other day, um, man came highly recommended by the fire chief. So we have a change of status form for him, is from a call firefighter, paramedic at sixteen twenty-four, to a probationary full-time firefighter, paramedic at twenty-three twenty-six.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second, and discussion on the motion, here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have a letter of resignation to the board of Freetown. Dear honorable board of selecting, this letter is to inform you of my decision to resign my, from my position as a planning technician. I have formed, I have informed the chairman of the board, and the last date of employment will be Friday, January nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. I think that she meant two thousand eighteen. While I'm leaving to pursue another employment opportunity, I wanna let you know
No, I was hoping she wrote nineteen.
I wanna let you know that I have, been my, my, it's been my honor to work for the town of Freetown for the past five years. I am grateful for this experience and to have had the opportunity to work with you and my col, and my colleagues at the town hall for a good, for the good citizens of Freetown. Best regards, Warren Moro. Planning technician.
I'll make a motion and we accept your resignation.
With heavy heart.
Yes.
Yes. Any second?
Yeah.
Motion made in second, and discussion on the motion, just, I just wanna say, truly with a heavy heart, I've worked with Lauren for, for several years now. She brought great knowledge to the position. She was a true asset to the town. She will be missed.
So sad to see her go.
Uh, and also, can we send a letter to her, please? Can I call the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Taylor Podowski, dearest Ms. Depp Souza, I'd like to inform you that I'm resigning my position from part-time nine-one-one dispatcher, signal operator, for the Freetown Police Department effective February first, two thousand eighteen. Thank you very much for the opportunity for the professional and personal development that you have provided me during this last two years. I have enjoyed working for the agency and appreciate the support provided to me during this, my time with the department. If, if I can be of any help during this transition If that, if I can be of any help during this transition, please let me know, sincerely, Taylor Podowski. And we have a change of status form from Taylor for, dated February first, two thousand eighteen, part-time signal operator, communication eighteen oh four, to resignation.
I'll make the motion to accept this letter of resignation, and just second.
Second.
Motion made in second, and discussion on the motion, here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
So we just gave him a raise and now he's resigning.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, and that was it? She, I'm sorry.
So I just got a text back saying Thursday, February first. Yeah, that's your next regional PINCOM meeting.
Okay, so we're good then, next Thursday?
So do you want me to move the building committee meeting to Thursday as well, or leave everything the way it is?
Well-
Let me see if I can, if I can, I will, if I can't, then we're out tonight.
Okay.
But, um-
Well, I just want Charlie to be able to, although, do we just, what, what was that for, did we play that up?
That was for the, um-
The marijuana.
If we can meet with MacRitch on that.
Yeah, well, we need to set up so we can, for Charlie, so, if we can, that'd be great.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, no, 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 I wanted to see if I could change the building committee, so we'd all be in one.
For Thursday.
For Thursday.
Because next Wednesday I can't go to the building.
Right.
Right, right.
All right.
So that being the end of that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Oh, we have executive session, or is that not?
No, we have nothing.
Nothing for executive session? So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.